Alright, it does look like it is live. I'm gonna go ahead and admit folks in the waiting room. Alright, good evening to everyone who has joined us. We would ask that those of you uh joining us on Zoom uh remain on mute. Um we are going to be live streaming uh to Facebook as well. Um so if at any point you get disconnected or unable to get back in, you can join us there. Um if you give me just a second here, we are going to um spotlight our uh candidates and um your hosts and we will get started. I got everybody pinned. Alright, everybody should be up. Thank you uh for your help there Heather. Um um let's go ahead and get started. So, good evening everyone. Uh my name is uh Victoria Henderson Weber. I have the honor of serving as the president of the Des Moines branch of the NAACP. I welcome you this evening to tonight's school board candidate forum. Uh first, I want to take a moment and thank our civic engagement chair Cory Royster and our voting rights champion John Olson for their leadership and organizing this event. Uh their dedication uh to helping our community make informed decisions at the ballot box embodies exactly what it means uh to be civically engaged. Um we would encourage you to participate in any way that you can, but following their lead is always a great place to start. So, thank you guys. Um the NAACP has always stood firm in support of strong equitable public education. We believe every child deserves a school that helps them thrive, no exceptions. Uh tonight's forum is focused on Des Moines Public uh Schools School Board Election. Uh for that election, there are two at-large seats on the ballot. Um and we are joined by three candidates Maria Alonso, Marcus Canon, and Sarah Hopkins, who are seeking to serve in those positions. In addition, Ryan Howell is running unopposed in District Two for that director's seat. And Dr. Skylar Mary Berry Mays is running unopposed in District Four for that director's seat. Even though those two do not have challengers, um it is important that we hear for them, hear from them as well, because every school board member represents the interest of all students, all families, and all voters in the Des Moines Metro. We encourage you to listen carefully and to think about how each candidate's vision aligns with what you believe our students and schools deserve. Cory?
Alright, well, thank you candidates. Now, Victoria and I will alternate uh asking questions that we have served up. We also have people monitoring both the Zoom chat and the Facebook chat there too. So participants, if you're watching, drop your questions there and we'll get to them as well. So um we'd love for each candidate to take maybe about two minutes to uh introduce themselves and uh share your inspiration to uh why you're running and um why you believe is your right person to lead our school, school board here at this particular moment. Um start with uh one of the ladies there, Maria, you'd like to go first?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for um bringing us together tonight. Thank you for inviting me to to be here with you. Um Maria Alonso, and I decided that I wanted to do this again and last night I was asked, you know, why? Why do it again? And my my response was, why not? Right? Um this work, serving children, is the best job and is the best thing that that we can all do. That's the best job that I have. And um I'm running because we have thirty thousand students in our district that completely depend on how we individually choose to lead. That depend on what we need to, what we choose to stand out for. Um we have twenty thousand two hundred and thirty students of color in this district. And I believe that every child deserves to have the education that they can have, the best education they can have. That's up to me and that's up to all of the leaders at the table. I am running because I have three children and one of them will be done uh with high school this year, with this December. And all of my children have been at DMPS. I was not fortunate to grow up in Des Moines. I actually came from um Mexico and I arrived in Iowa in nineteen ninety. I ended up graduating from Muscatine High School. Um and I remember that the reason that we stayed in Iowa was because my dad said that Iowa's schools were the best. And I believe that we can go back to that. So that is why I'm here, because I believe that we can get back and continue to give our students the best for them.
Great, good. Thank you Maria. Sarah, you'd like to go next?
Sure. Hello, thank you so much for having me. My name is Sarah Hopkins and I'm running for the at-large seat. Um when asked the question why I'm running, the short answer is because I truly believe that the success of our city depends on the success of our schools. Uh I'm an East High graduate. I have two kids currently within the DMPS district, one at Lincoln and one at Brody. I've been advocating for DMPS for literally my whole life. Um but specifically the past fifteen years, I have been a Realtor. I opened up a real estate office in Highland Park on Sixth Avenue because it was really, really important to me that we have a neighborhood real estate office. Um everything is in the suburbs. And that's kind of a pattern that I've continued to see is that people really are moving out of Des Moines more and more. And I know firsthand how much of a driving factor schools are in people's decisions of where they want to live. The reality is, our enrollment is down. Our enrollment is down nine hundred students this year. We have to get our enrollment back up if we want to get the funding that we need to get our schools to where they need to be. Having equitable education and that every single child in every single neighborhood gets the best education possible should be the number one most important thing to every single person in this city. Not only for the city of Des Moines, but for the entire metro. This is their workforce. We need to be getting every single person around us rooting for Des Moines Public Schools.
Great answer. Thank you. Um gentlemen, let's see, Marcus, would you like to go next?
Perfect, thank you. So I'm Marcus Canon. Um I'm a senior planner at the Des Moines Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is a is an organization that works across the region with communities to improve the vibrancy uh of our transportation network. And through that, uh we work with communities across the region on land use and and other related items um to make sure that our communities are healthy and and sustainable. Um I've been civically engaged for for quite some time in Des Moines. I I spent six years um on the Beaverdale Neighborhood Association, four years as president, um served on a number of other boards. And about eighteen months ago-ish, uh I had a severe medical incident that that kind of had me step back from civic engagement and allowed me to focus on my family um and my medical needs. Um and since that time, I you know, now I'm I'm ready to reengage again and and spending that time with my girls, I really got to understand that, you know, that's where I want to focus my attention is making sure that that they have the best education possible, that their peers have the best education, that all the students um in the school district really have the best and best opportunities uh to move through. And that requires, you know, a really strong school district. And one of the benefits of that is um if we have a strong school district, we have a strong community, we have a strong uh city, and eventually we'll have a strong region. So it fits really well with what I do day to day. Um and it just really, really means a whole lot to me to be able to focus and and on the connection between what I do and my family. So that's why I'm running.
Good. Thank you. And just a quick reminder, again, that question is introduce yourself. Uh what inspired you to run and why do you believe is your right person to lead our schools at this particular moment? And Skylar, like to go next?
Great, thank you Cory and Victoria and NAACP Des Moines branch for coordinating this. Um it's certainly a pleasure to be able to join you all today. Uh Cory, to answer your question in its most simple form, what I would share is that every student deserves the opportunity to thrive. Eighteen years ago, as a high school senior, about three weeks before I graduated from high school, the biggest that I could fathom my life thereafter was being an assistant manager at Hy-Vee. I worked at Hy-Vee for three years leading up to that point, and that to me was the goal in life, was to be an assistant manager. But much of that changed after having a conversation and an experience with a high school teacher. After I told Ms. Bragg about what my interests were after high school, never did she make it seem as if my ideas were too small, but instead what she did was defended my potential. Ms. Bragg then encouraged me to do things like take the ASVAB Military Placement Exam, take the ACT, do an internship. But beyond talking about it, she had action behind it. She set me up with a one-on-one, two-week internship with her State Farm agency, but drove a lot of my interest in finance. She helped me take the ASVAB exam, which I took, I did well, but I didn't have an interest in military experience. When I decided to take the ACT, I realized it cost eighty dollars and I said, you know, there's no way making five seventy-five an hour at Hy-Vee while I spend eighty dollars on an exam. What Ms. Bragg did instead was she paid for me to take that exam. The following week, I took the ACT and I didn't do great on it, but at the time I didn't know that. I scored a sixteen on that exam. I called Ms. Bragg, I shared that with her, and she said, would you be comfortable with with me sharing this with the rest of the class? On Monday, when I walked into my IJAC classroom, there were balloons hanging from the ceiling, there were streamers hanging from the wall, and there was a cake in that classroom that said congratulations. At that point, Ms. Bragg defended my potential and spoke existence into me that I hadn't been spoken before. What really cemented this experience and this relationship was, Ms. Bragg then encouraged me to go to college. She told me I was always good at finance and real estate, and perhaps that's what I should major in because I was good at playing the game Monopoly. So having an interest in being an assistant manager at Hy-Vee and then eventually going on as a first-generation college student and graduate to graduate with my bachelor's, master's, and PhD was all because of a conversation I had three weeks before graduating high school. So my why in a more elaborate way, what I'll share is that while I can't be the Ms. Bragg for all thirty thousand students, what I can do as a board member is inform policy, inform investment, so that all of our students have the same experiences that I did, if not better, when they reach that same point.
Thank you. Alright, Ryan, what you got for us?
I'll finish this up. Thanks, everybody, for uh the invitation, the opportunity to be be with you and and have this conversation. It's a very important one. And um you know, there's a lot going wrong. There's a lot of issues that are happening right now in our world and um education and public education in our city is kind of ground zero for, I think, turning things around and investing in our community. As others have said, we can't have a vibrant and growing Des Moines without strong public education, public schools. So I have four children, two are in middle school at Calanand and two are at the downtown school. And so I've I've got first first row seat at at what our education system can do and how great our teachers and staff are, and also have an opportunity to see some of the challenges and opportunities we have as a community. And also um by trade, I'm an attorney. I graduated from the University of Iowa for law school and I practice now in-house with principal. In the evenings, I coach soccer. So I coach a lot of soccer through Des Moines Soccer Club and that's it's been um a very humbling and, you know, privileged opportunity to to interact and to coach with a lot of other families that I don't normally see in my day-to-day in my office. And all those communities are in and live in District Two, where I'm uh running to represent on the school board. And uh you know, that gives me some insight into the 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 scope of our school district and the promise of our school district. And not every school is the same. Not every school and not every community is facing the same issues. And so uh I got inspired to to take my turn to be a public servant here for our community. And I think if we if we care about our community, we should all be involved in our our schools, whether or not we have children. You don't you don't have to have four children to care about our neighbors and our community's health. And so I look forward to uh contributing my talent as as an attorney. I do think that's, you know, for those of us that have been on boards before, um it's always good to have uh diversity of background perspectives to come and be at that table having that conversation, just like we have on this Zoom call tonight. Uh I think it'd be, it's an important time to maybe have uh someone with a legal background to be able to uh take part in those conversations. So I hope I can offer those talents uh to the school district. And thank you.
Good. Well, thank you all for the introduction there. I can uh take the first question there, Victoria. Got it. So um I'm sure we'll get a a lot of questions about, you know, the elephants in the room, right? About the bond reprimand and and the superintendent um search here. But um outside of that, uh what what do you feel like should be the priorities, the three priorities the uh Des Moines School Board should focus on for the next five years? And I'll I'll throw that question out there to whoever wants to take it first.
Jump since I went last. I'll go first on this one, guys. The uh yeah, I'll get the conversation going. So I do think we have a tremendous opportunity to tell our story better. Because anyone that's been in our schools knows that there is great work happening. There are dedicated teachers and staff, and there are tremendous students all over, all over the district. And so I don't think we do enough of of showcasing the good, the good work that we do. And I do think there's opportunities to, as I kind of alluded to, you know, we ha- as a district, I think, have tried so hard to make everything the same. It's the same thing we see at the federal level and the state level. We want to do standardized testing. We want to make everybody look the same and act the same, and that doesn't work. Because every school and every neighborhood has different challenges and different opportunities. And so I think we need to be we need to be deliberate about how we go about setting policy and have the flexibility to give those schools and those professionals the tools and the resources they need that might not look the same as the school that's one mile down down the street.
Yeah, I'll piggyback off of that as well. Um and say, I think one of the top priorities, I love that Ryan said, we don't showcase enough of how many amazing programs that we have. Um but I think, first of all, the board, we've got to earn the trust back from the community. Um I think that's that's really important. And we need to go out and we need to listen. We need to listen to what each school needs, because as Ryan said, every school is different. The needs at Jackson are very different than the needs at Jefferson. And I think that that is incredibly important, that we are finding out, we're listening to principals, we're listening to teachers, and we're listening to parents from each school to figure out what they need the most. And then we we got to figure out how to give them the resources that they need despite having the budget cuts that I know that we're going to have. So I'm still learning a lot. There's still a lot that I have to to learn and understand about how it all works. But I think that's definitely one of the absolute top priorities.
Thank you.
I, let's just keep the piggybacking going. Um I agree with Sarah with her comments about building trust back. Um you know, that a lot of that stems, I think, from just, you know, the the onslaught of information about the superintendent and what happened and what's going on and the changes that are occurring very quickly. Um and then also having the bond on top of that. It's just a lot of information and a lot of uh kind of breaking news every day, something is changing. Um and we need to, we need to step back, we need to take time and listen and uh really understand, you know, from a community's perspective, you know, we have these two major things that are going to have to be priorities. You know, whether or not the bond passes, we're going to have improvements that need to be made in our schools. It's it gets easier if the bond passes, yes. If the bond doesn't pass, we need to, we need to come up with a strategy to address the identified issues. Um and then, of course, we need to, we need to prioritize hiring a new superintendent. Beyond that, we need to move past those two conversations and start really focusing in on what are the needs of the students here and have the conversations about, you know, here's, here's what we need to do for our students, because there are thirty thousand students and that's our primary focus. Not these two other major items that are that are news during the election cycle. It's the thirty thousand students.
Yeah, I appreciate the question.
Oh, so sorry.
Go ahead, Maria, go ahead.
Would you repeat the question, por favor?
Uh sure. Um so like I said, we we we'll we'll probably get plenty of questions about the elephants in the room, right? The bond and and the uh superintendent search. So my question then was, what outside of those areas, which are very important, right? What three priorities do you feel like the uh the the Des Moines Public School Board should focus on over over the next five years? Outside of those important, very important issues?
Sure. You know, I think that we, we as a board need to continue to stay focused on student outcomes, um on the resources that we need to invest, um to continue to support students, to support uh teachers. Um there is a lot that teachers are doing every single day with very little. So bringing the focus back to that, clearly, whether or not the bond passes, the work will continue to be done. And so being creative, I think, not losing sight of what the most important thing is, and it's our students. Um the other thing that I I I value in the work, I think, that our board has done is being able to engage community, to engage families. Um as we continue to do the work, I believe that there is a lot more work that has been done to be able to be inclusive of all voices, of all families. We have to be able to hear to, we have to be able to hear the concerns that families are having, definitely with schools, with teachers, with students. But talking to parents, parents in our district are rich in knowledge, and I feel that sometimes we, as a district, don't see that. And so engaging parents as we seek to do things better moving forward.
Cory, certainly appreciate the question. And what I'll share is that a year and a half ago, when I thought about joining the board, this was one of the questions that I asked myself. And I realized there are so many priorities and it's difficult to come up with just three. So what I instead did was, I put them into three categories of what I'd like to see being the priorities. And if anyone visits my website, if they see my yard signs, they will see my name, and right next to my name, you'll see improve, involve, and inspire. And it's really reflecting in much of what um the other candidates have shared already, but it's about improving student outcomes, not only academically, but also the social emotional learning of our students. It's about involving our community in the decisions that we have locally, but also in the conversations that we're having, whether those be at board meetings, on the weekends, in the evenings, or at spaces where we as board members need to show up to where the community is comfortable. And the third piece I have not heard as much about is really about being inspiring. You know, everything doesn't require a methodology to make progress. Sometimes it's something as simple as showing up and letting students know, I can do that in the future because you're doing it. So for me, that third priority bucket is really about just inspiring our students, inspiring our teachers, sending them notes of gratitude, and letting them know the work you do is important, and we appreciate you for doing it.
That's amazing. I love that, Skylar.
Thank you, everyone. So you guys have touched on um the next question to some extent, each of you. And so I want to call it out specifically. Um one of the things that I know, um because I am actively participating with uh school board-related activities and the district as a whole, is that our school board is unique um from other school boards um that are in the metro and very different than what people assume based on what they see on television. And so because our school board is so unique and the governance of it has been uh unique, um there's a lot of misnomers about what responsibilities exist on the board. I believe that if more people in the community um understood the role of the board versus the role of administrators, um they might be better off. We might be able to point the blame where blame needs to be pointed. We might be able to hold the right people accountable for certain decisions. Uh we might be able to support people better um in their roles and positions if we understood what they really were. So I'm curious as to how you will help the public, help the families and the community partners that exist better understand how the board works um to ensure that there is two-way engagement that's not just supervis- uh superficial. Um and also to allow those parties to hold uh everyone accountable to the right jobs. Um I think I would start with uh Marcus.
I'd be happy to take this one first. Um you know, one of the great things that I think the city of Des Moines and other cities have done is have kind of a citizen uh I would say it's Citizen Advocate Education Program, where you can bring in members of the community to the city and uh talk about different departments, what goes on, how the how the city council works, how different boards work. I think that's definitely something that we could emulate. Um and again, going back to kind of the progress doesn't need a methodology. There's already a methodology set up for those types of things. We could, we could pull it in. Um but to get to your your two-way street conversation, you know, like how do you, how do you make this a two-way street about what the board should be doing and what the board shouldn't be doing? Um through that process of talking about, well, here's how the board functions and here's the superintendent's role, and here are the policies that the board abides by, um we, you could incorporate a component of that kind of program and have that engagement piece of like, as as a resident, as a community member, as a parent, what do you think the policies of the board should be? And get feedback that way. So then, so then the board can make tweaks to how they approach their policy, whether, you know, it's um their engagement with the superintendent or administrators. Personally, one of the things that I would like to see um is some language changed about how uh the school board interacts with teachers. You know, if they go into schools, they're really not supposed to engage about school issues. Um I think that's kind of um a missed opportunity. It doesn't mean that I we're going to necessarily take action immediately or even address that action. But it's really important to have conversations about what's going well and what's not going well with the educators who are in the classrooms day to day.
Sarah, maybe?
Yeah, I think it it starts with listening. Um it starts with listening, not assuming that we know what people are thinking, um understanding what they understand the board's role is. Um really taking the time to listen to teachers, listen to, as I said before, principals and to parents. Um and then making sure that we are holding people accountable, that we have um we have taken what we know to be true and we are making sure that there's accountability behind it. Um and that when those, when those policies are set, that we are making sure that everything is being followed, but that we are listening to people to help decide what all of those um efforts are.
Maria?
You know, I think that one of the things that I've learned in the last four years is that um it's it's really hard to, for communities um in in our city, in our district, um sometimes to understand uh systems. And I believe that what helps is showing up, is making yourself uh visible, is making yourself um accessible, and providing insight, providing information, explaining things, connecting people to um the person that uh perhaps can answer questions for them. I have, I have attended events, district events, and sometimes, you know, what I what I've seen is discouraging because our own employees in the district do not know the role of the board. And I personally try to take advantage of those opportunities to invite people to learn more, to come to board meetings, to get more involved. Um I believe that the key for me um is to be there and to certainly, I think, elevate uh messages. And to certainly, I think elevate uh, messages, concerns that um, the community has. And um, address them with, with our board. Um, I, I, I just, you know, I, I think that we, we can talk about policy and changes in policy. But um, oftentimes, we expect the community and we expect people to come to us, rather than us going to them.
Absolutely. Ryan?
Yeah, I'll build on that. I mean, I think being accessible. And uh, I'd add a layer of humility, like coming in and acknowledging. Not, none of us have all the answers here. We don't have a five-point program. We don't, we don't have the silver bullet for our school district. And we have to come in with that humility to be able to ask uh, those parents, those administrators, those teachers. What's going on? What, what's worked and what hasn't worked? And so uh, I'm sure, I'm sure lots of us have all, up in door knocking for the, the bond referendum. And I think that's enlightening when you, when you talk with folks at their doorstep. How many folks um, are not even aware of the reimagining plan? When they hear about it, they love it. It's all good. But they don't, they haven't heard about it because they're, they're busy in their own lives, doing their own thing. And so I think as a board member, we have to be accessible. We have to be out there. We have to put ourselves in those positions to learn from the community. And not assume we have all the answers to solve everything. Uh, that'll go a long way to being uh, connected to the community and its needs.
Okay, Skylar?
Thank you. Uh, there, there's a word, it's called epistemology and it's really about the study of how do we know what we know? And uh, you know, to me, that is the core of this question. There are a lot of ways for people to learn about the role of a school board, but if we're focusing on solely one way. By disseminating it through social media posts, or if we're only hoping that people learn about it by attending school board meetings. Or if we're only hoping people learn about it through going to a training, it's not gonna hit all populations. The same way our children and our students deserve to be able to learn in diverse ways. So for my solution, it's really finding many ways to disseminate that. Uh, one of the unique examples I'll share is several months ago this year, I was invited by Representative Rob Johnson to do a civic engagement simulator. And this was very different than someone reading about how do you, what does the school board do online? Instead, they took the active role as a school board member during the simulation. They took the active role of a senator in the simulation. And for that, some people learn best that way. So I think um, there is no one solution. People learn differently regardless if that's about school board or if that's mathematics, if that's literacy. We've got to find multiple ways to make sure the community is informed and they're learning in the way that they retain the knowledge best.
Uh, next question. So um, do this kind of differently, right? Like, how will you maintain transparency um, and, and trust when um. When and if legal and personal confidentiality issues may limit you I, from uh, sharing information, right? Um, in, in, in light of a lot of things that are going on currently right now, like how do you balance that? When and if that happens and, and your name's attached to that, right? Um, we'd like to tackle that first, then I'll pick from there.
You go first. I haven't went first yet, so I feel like that's the equitable thing to do.
There you go.
You know, uh. It, it's a, it's a tough position to be in for sure, but what I do know is that people don't trust positions, people trust people. So for me, what's most important is that as an individual, first and foremost, I need to be visible, I need to be engaged with community. And with populations that I represent, but also populations I don't represent because they too deserve to have access to the board. Um, I, I, I would never solely rely on the fact that as a board member, people are going to trust that. But first and foremost, I want them to trust Skylar Mayberry Mays and then they trust me. And they trust me in my role as a school board member because the foundation was already created.
Ryan?
Yeah, I think, I think your question goes at transparency, right? And um, given, given recent events and what are gonna be trailing events coming out of that. I think there, there's gonna be things for the, the board to tackle as far as walking the line of how transparent can we be? I hope that um, we'll be absolutely as far to that transparency level as we can. Because as others have said, we need to rebuild public trust. We need to uh, allow our community to see that we are making decisions in the daylight and that we are making them in their best interest. And let, let me caveat that, say, make sure, I'm not saying that any of the, the past board decisions were, were not made in that nature. I think they were. I think everybody was making them in their good faith. Uh, but when they, public can't see. It just feeds, you know, uh, speculation, distrust and, and, and we're dealing with that right now. So I think all of us are gonna have that, that burden of trying to uh, be as transparent as possible when, when we can. And I think there's a lot of things we can be transparent as we go forward on this. So um, I, I think everybody's on the same page with that, but I would hope that the community will, you know, Skylar was saying. Community will give you their trust and they will give you grace when you are honest with them and they believe that you are doing your best. To show them what, what's going on. And so um, I, I think the community will, will, will pay that back.
Yeah, I think it's just really repeating what people have said, but prioritizing transparency. And that starts with earning the trust back from the public. Um, you know, I'm not a politician, I'm just a mom. I live in the city of Des Moines. I'm always going to be as authentic and myself as I am and transparent. And I think that that's how you build trust is just being yourself. Um, and truly genuinely caring and genuinely listening. Because it's, it's what we all want and knowing that your school board member wants nothing more than the success of everything. I think that that's how you start getting that trust. And from there, you continue to just constantly be as transparent as you possibly can.
Yeah. You know, to me, it's all about relationship building. Um, people will trust you based on um, how you make them feel. And i- in order for that to happen, you have to show up. Right? You have to make yourself uh, visible and accessible. And you know, as Sarah mentioned, um. I, I, I'm not a politician. I, I dislike politics. Um, I'm a mom, I'm a single mom. And I'm just trying to be a voice. I'm just trying to represent, right? I'm just trying to elevate needs of families, of uh, vulnerable families in this district. And trying to um, bring a different maybe perspective um, to, to the table. So. It's all about relationship building. Um, I um, I think that we need to do that. We as a board need to be able to do that um, to regain trust.
Yeah, and Marcus?
Yeah, I think, you know, going last with this many individuals, uh, and we all feel fairly the same. I think one of the important things is when, when you have a conversation with somebody and they're asking you a difficult situation. And you know that you can't release information because it's personnel or you know, it's a personnel matter that. Legally, you're not required to, you're, you're required not to say something. Um, you need to be honest and say that. You need to say, this is a personnel matter that I can't discuss with you. But I'm also willing to listen to whatever you have to say about it. And that's when you, you stop talking and you listen to, to the constituents, you listen to everyone uh, from the community. You know, maybe it's students. You listen to the students and their concerns about it and you just have to be honest and say, I can't, I can't discuss any further this information. Um, speaking of transparency, one of the other things that I've noticed while I've been, you know. Watching board meetings and getting comfortable with the board is that, to me, some, one of these like little nuanced things and how the meeting is run. That could be changed to kind of improve transparency is currently the board will, will state an item, they'll have a conversation. And then the chair will point to somebody and say, you have the motion. Uh, that's pretty unorthodox. Um, most boards don't do that. Uh, they don't identify out front who's gonna do the motion. Uh, because that makes it feel like, you know, the decision has already been made and there have been conversations behind the scenes. Uh, so I think that if we, if you make that tweak, um, and, and you make it clear that, you know. The intention of this motion is the conversation that's happening at the table and then we decide and we move forward or we don't. Um, I think that helps build trust that decisions are being made in, in the light of day.
Absolutely. All right, so um, one of the things that I recognize. And that you probably have thirty thousand people who would agree with me. Is that there are, uh, there is a missing voice at our school board and our school board meetings. Um, and that is the student voice. I would really like to know from all of you. How you believe the board should include and encourage the student voice in decision-making and even monitoring processes? Uh, maybe, let's start with Maria.
Gracias. Um, you know, I love this conversation. Uh, because I've actually been approached by um, students. Um, who are asking the same thing. Who um, say, you know, that's great that you're there. Um, and. We uh, appreciate that, but you're an older person. I, I don't think I'm an older person, but, but apparently I am. And, and it's very valid. Their concern is very valid. And um, I have actually had conversations with um, a couple of my um. Board colleagues because it's important. And that is actually one of the things that we hope, I hope that we're able to change.
I'm happy to jump in on this one next. Um, you know, I think there are really interesting models. That you just incorporate students onto the board. And they don't necessarily have the same, the same voting level as, as the elected officials. Um, but they can engage in the conversation just like everyone else. Um, and, and you know, have that conversation and provide input on each of the items and ask questions and, and be engaged. And you know, with the, with the reimagined program that we're going through, like why not take a look at it? And with the new districts, pick some students from uh, each of the three areas and, and say, you know, you're. You're the representative, you know, for this area for the next year. Uh, for the next school year, like you're on the board, you're here to give your opinion, like share it with us. And then we can incorporate that into the decision-making.
Skylar?
Yeah, this is a great point and it's, it's often a gap I think about also because the board does deserve to be represented. And rep- or excuse me, representative of the populations that it serves. Um, I, what I, what I do know is that there are a few instances and a few situations where the district as a whole has tried to embody this. Um, last year, uh, the superintendent started a um, a student, a superintendent student advisory board. So it was a student from each of the high schools that actually um, reported up through the superintendent, offering feedback on things that could happen. Now, that's probably much more operational versus visionary and governing like a board does. But I do think there are some pieces from that that could be implemented at a board level. You know, I was really fortunate. I was attending a I A S B meeting, which is the Iowa Association of School Boards. And at this meeting, it convenes all of the school board members throughout the state of Iowa. And at this particular meeting, I was sitting at a table and at that table, it was myself, several other school board members throughout the state and then two students. And I was a little surprised, so wow, there's two students sitting here at the table and I was curious where they were from. Now, I'm gonna give a shout out to an area I typically don't give shout outs and that's one of our suburban districts. But the Ankeny School Board actually had student representatives on it, which I thought was actually fascinating. Because those students had a very different perspective about the experiences of students and the experiences of the district. That could probably never be voiced through an adult who's not going through those. So I would be very in favor of engaging our student population much more in board decision, or excuse me, board conversations. And um, rather, I don't know exactly what that looks like. I'd have to figure out and think a little bit through what that maybe looks like structurally. But I do think there is a space and there is a need to have a student voice at that table.
Aaron?
I think this is such a great point. Um, you know, these thirty thousand students, they are our why. They're exactly why we're doing all of this. And maybe this needs to be one of the board priorities moving forward, is making sure that we do have student representation. Uh, in future decisions. I also think that we can learn from past mistakes. Um, I, I watched as students fought really, really, really hard to keep their neighborhood stadium open. And their voices were not heard. They were given the opportunity to speak, but. Those, those comments weren't necessarily taken into account with the decision that was made. And I think that was really unfortunate. I think that as we move forward, when we're making big decisions like that. We should absolutely be having students give their perspective. But we need to be taking that perspective into account with the decision that is made.
Yeah, I'll just jump on. I, I love the concept of uh, getting the student engagement, having their voices there. Uh, maybe the advisory committee is, is that, that vehicle. I, I don't know that um, there's a lot of students that wanna sit through uh, the board meetings. They would, might not be the most exciting or engaging thing or, or medium for them. But I do think there's, we gotta make space to uh, give them uh, a way to have their voice there. And so uh, op- open to how that, how that could come together.
Good though. Thank you. Um, according to my very scientific graphing that I have here, um, Sarah, you're the only one that hasn't gone first yet, right? So this question is uh, to you first. Uh, what does uh, meaningful partnership uh, look like for community groups such as the N double A C P? And uh, other advocacy organizations, um, not just on a, on a, on a PR kind of level, but on, on a policy level. Like what, what, what does that look like?
Uh, I think it's incredibly important. I think partnerships with organizations throughout our community needs to also be top priority. Um, I do sit on the board for Urban Dreams. And so it's been great to see the partnership between Urban Dreams and the Des Moines Public Schools and how they can. Um, work with those resources and really fill a need that is missing and is a gap within our system. When we have limited resources, we have to reach out to those other organizations within the community to make things happen. Um, I think we need to be incredibly innovative and we need to be thinking outside of the box. And we need to be engaging all of the people that need to have a seat at the table. So the N double A C P nonprofits around that are serving our community specifically. Within the schools that need it most and making sure that we are um, giving them a seat at the table.
Thank you. Um, Maria?
Repeat the question, please.
Um, so again, but what, what does meaningful partnership uh, look like on a policy level for community groups? Such as N double A C P or Urban Dreams or any other um, uh, advocacy organization?
I, I love the word meaningful there in the question. Um. And I would add intentional. Um, I, I, I think sometimes we, we invite the same people in. And we, we don't cultivate uh, more uh, than sometimes what's obvious. And I believe that there are other organizations that have the ability to support. Our students bring in resources that we as a district don't have. Um. I believe it's important to, to look at what we have, what we truly have in our community. And make space for people that want to help out to be there.
Thank you, man. Um, Skylar?
You know, I was really fortunate for nearly seven years, I worked in kind of the community relations and employee engagement space for really large organizations. But one of the things I took out of that work was that there is volunteerism and then there is skills-based volunteerism and engagement. I do believe that the district does a decent job of getting people to volunteer. Uh, that may be things like reading books, that may be things like helping with athletics and sporting events. But where I do think there's probably a gap and there's certainly some opportunities around that skill-based volunteering and that skill-based engagement. We have a lot of community partners that have the ability to help with advocacy work. There are community partners that understand financial literacy at levels that maybe we don't have internally within the district. There are partners within the community that understand uh, language immersion and, and what that may feel like and uh, be like for students. So what I would really love to see, and I know that our um, Chief of Staff for Philanthropic Engagement has also been thinking about this in the district. Is how do we actually leverage the skills-based engagement and volunteerism of our partners? Versus just having a broad opportunity for everybody to just volunteer by way of going and reading a book in a classroom. I don't wanna negate the fact that literacy is important, but that's not everyone's calling. And some people have a very different skill set that could be utilized within the district.
Thank you, sir. Um, Ryan?
Yeah, I guess two, two parts to the, to partnership. One is, is the, the concept that I brought up earlier. The humility to listen to those partners and get the input and go to those communities and, and get their input about what's going on. But as Skylar was discussing, we are a community that is, is rich in resources. We do have employers. We do have professionals all over the. But as Skylar was discussing, we are a community that is is rich in resources. We do have employers. We do have professionals all over the city. And we need to invite those folks in and figure out how we can get them in the door and it's not just to read. It is to uh fund a therapist in the school. It is to meaningfully partner with the their athletic department. There are a lot of opportunities and I think not only do we need those resources because our we need those resources. But that's a way to to have everybody realize that's this is my school district. That's my school. Even if I don't have children there. I'm invested in that school and I'm invested in this community because of those partnerships. So. I think it's beyond just asking for money or just asking for people to to read. It's about bringing them in and truly making them part of the the community and making sure they know this is their school district too.
I think I think Ryan brought up a really great point of, you know, it's not just asking for money because that. You know, we're, we had a question last night um about the fine arts and how we can support that when budgets are tight and and the arts. Uh, tend to get cut first. And you know, I answered that by saying, you know, we have, we have a great organization called Bravo in in the region. Who could connect to to artists who can assist and and volunteer time to potentially fill a gap that we have. Um, but I also know that it's really important because the time value of a lot of these organizations, because you're volunteer-based. Um, we can't ask every organization in the region, hey, give us your time. When your volunteers, you have you have jobs outside of this and you might not have additional time to serve. Uh, so I think that that's really important. It's really important to focus on, you know, bringing everyone to the table, bringing the organizations to the table because. While we all all said that we want to listen and we want to be engaged with the community. Sometimes, you know, the school board isn't the best avenue to get the best feedback, right? N double A C P may be the best avenue to get some feedback, but then we need to hear about. So building those relationships so that organizations have the trust in the school board as well. And we can have those consistent dialogues about, you know, what are you hearing? What are issues that are concerning your organization that the school, the school board could take up as policy if needed? And then how can we fill gaps where it's not monetary, but maybe it's a volunteer that you you can connect us to? So that's how I kind of see it.
Alright, so recently, uh, the board had to adjust its goals and guardrails. In response to federal diversity guidelines or federal diversity guidance, maybe is the better way to say that. Uh, what single metric would you prioritize uh to measure district success and student outcomes? Um, I will repeat that. What single metric would you prioritize to measure district success and student outcomes? Um, how about Ryan?
That's a tough question. I don't think you can pro- I don't think you can use one metric. I I mean, that we talked about earlier. Not every community, not every school, not every neighborhood looks the same and um success doesn't always look the same in each spot. And I think we, part of the, part of the reason we are struggling in public education right now is because of, I think. The standardization of a top-down federal uh mandates, including telling us. What we can do as far as uh inclusion and diversity in our own community. I don't, I don't think that's helpful to us in trying to educate children and and create success here. So. Um, I know the board has spent, the current board spent a lot of time on student-centered outcomes, you know, student-focused outcomes. And, you know, our literacy rates, graduation rates are important stats, but I I don't think that we can just go all in on one. And not be watching what's going on over here. We have to be able to walk, chew gum, kick the soccer ball. You know, dance when appropriate and i- it's, I don't think there's, there's one metric that we can rely on. Ultimately, the health of our school district is gonna is gonna come down to uh something that Sarah mentioned, I think. It are, do people want to be here? Do people see, do families see their children having success and growing and being safe and healthy here? And you can't, you can't get that data. That's not gonna show up on a um, a test or a survey. But that's gotta be, there's gotta be overarching concept of goal, what we're doing. We're doing all these things so that our school district is desirable. And our families feel safe, welcome, and they want to be here. And I and I think uh it's gonna be really hard to quantify.
Skylar.
Yeah, you know, sorry, I I would love to be able to answer the question directly and singularly like you asked, but I have to agree with Ryan. There there's not one metric. That I think measures the success of a student, um particularly thinking about our special education students and the amount of students in the district that are on individualized education plans. They all have different needs and even the students that are not on I E Ps, they have unique needs as well. So you can look at things that are very standardized like graduation rate and you can say a district's successful based off graduation rate. Which doesn't tell the entire story. You can look at things like placement rate into workforce or college acceptance rate. But it doesn't tell the entire story. I appreciated the comment around desirability, but then again, it doesn't tell the entire story. So while I would love to be able to focus on one thing in the Dear Colleague letter that you're referring to certainly has put some wrenches in plans. Um, I don't believe there is one singular thing that we could u- universally use to measure the efficacy or the success of all of our students.
Okay, Maria.
One size does not fit all, right? Um, i- we have to, I I think, look at the whole child. Uh, the needs of that child, the the community, their background, um and go from there. We we, there is not one single thing that we can do to say that we're going to measure, right, anything. Um, I say, let's look at the child, the children, the child and the and their needs.
Sarah.
So obviously, I agree with all of this, but let's also think about something that can actually be measured. So I'm pretty sure that the district up till twenty twenty used the Gallup poll to measure hope and I think that. Figuring out how hopeful our students are, research shows that's a huge indication for. How successful they're going to be. I also think that we need to sit back and look at progress. So it was easy for the register to come out and say that, you know, twelve of the worst schools were within the Des Moines School District. But what they didn't report on was how much those schools had improved. If you, if you actually show the data behind where they were and where they are now, you're gonna see a huge improvement and that needs to be taken into consideration. Because we all know we can't go by test scores, we can't go by these standard measures that they use. When we have students who English isn't their first language, that's not fair. So I think that if we can really focus on the hope and um how much those kids. Know that they have for their future as well as how much progress has been made. I think that that's a huge indication of success and something that can actually be measurable.
Marcus.
Yeah, Sarah kind of stole my my thunder there. Um, I was gonna say, you know, I deal a lot with data. You can't look at one piece and say that that's, that's the whole. Um, in my day to day, I I deal with transportation data and if we just said, you know, traffic volumes was it? Then we'd be missing everything like safety. Um. I I was gonna spin and say, you know, some cities have had success looking at, you know, we've talked about the city as uh the school district as supporting the city and creating a vibrant city. Happiness scores in cities in in Europe has been something that's been tracked and it's seeing, uh, you know, what is the happiest city? I do think that's something along the lines of opportunity for students, um measuring, you know, how how do students feel about future opportunities? Would be good because we've talked a lot about, you know, we're, we want to provide those future opportunities and make sure that our students are feeling comfortable and and. Excelling and having as many opportunities as possible. So that might be something that we might want to look at as a as a new metric. Um, that we ask the students, you know, how how do you feel about opportunities that you have in the future?
Alright. Um, let's see, what board-level strategies will you support to um? Continue to build and sustain an educator pipeline that reflects the uh current student body? And the uh communities that the Des Moines Public School serves, right? How will you support that on a bond level? What what bond-level strategies do you support for that? I'll kick that question to uh you, Skylar.
Where I want to make sure I'm understanding the question. I- is it around how the bond will attract and retain educators?
Board level.
Board level, yeah, right, right. And which which one of those strategies that are currently outlined, do you support that will um support the the educators? And ensure that they they reflect the uh current scoo- student body in the communities that they serve?
So so I I'm not sure I'm fully followed. What board-level strategies? Repeat it again.
What board-level strategies will you support to build and sustain an educator pipeline that reflects students? The student body and the uh communities that Des Moines Public School serves?
Thank you. I don't know why I kept hearing bond in there, but board-level strategies, alright. So, you know, there are, there are a lot of strategies. One thing I do want to make very clear and put out front is that. D M P S has been a destination employer for quite some time. This is not new. Uh, I I don't want the news and the media to conflict with the reality. Teachers that work in D M P S absolutely love what they're doing because they're doing it for the students. So that doesn't mean that we don't have to continue to do work and continue to improve. There are some strategies that were currently in place and I would say to continue doing those and that's diversification of recruitment strategies. Right now, um, the the D M P S student body is extremely diverse and I'm not just talking racially or ethnically. But also linguistically, socio-economically, and every other way you can think about diversity. That means that we have to, we have to recruit from those populations as well and sometimes that doesn't come directly out of your backyard. Now, while I always have a preference and an affinity for getting talent at home. I do think there's opportunity and there's value for diversifying thought and get and and getting talent and attracting talent that may not be right in the backyard. So I would say I would encourage the district to continue and the board to continue thinking about. We are a destination district as it relates to talent and we've got to treat ourselves as such. We are not a small. Tiny school district that's not doing amazing things and people that want to do something innovative, people that want to do something that's challenging, but extremely rewarding. As long as we can tell that story, I believe that the teachers, the educators and the staff that keep D M P S running will too see the value in that.
Ryan.
Yeah, I don't have any specific bond uh initiatives, but I I'll piggyback on Skylar. I I think we need to continue to diversify where we go to get our talent. And and look for for a- anyone that wants to be dedicated to our children and I I do think that's an important point. It goes back to like telling our story. There are so many dedicated teachers and staff that are already in our district. We need to uplift those stories. We need to let people know about those. So that we can attract more dedicated folks that want to be here. And I feel like that's, you know, i- if anyone has children. I always had middle school conferences tonight, right? And I always come out of those really inspired. Because you go and you meet with these teachers and every time I'm like, wow, they are, they are so dedicated to what they are doing right now, right? They want to be here. They are not checking, they're not checking the the clock behind me. They are excited about the kids that they work with every day and the opportunities they have. And uh, that's what we're looking for and um I think we we need to continue to tell the story and and find, find the next generation of those uh dedicated. Uh, teachers and staff.
Thank you, Ryan. And again, just for the remaining group, let me just clarify, reiterate the the question here is what board-level strategies? Will you support to that will uh build and sustain an educator pipeline that reflects the current student body? And the uh community that the D M P S serves currently, right? That's the question I do. Board, not bonds. That was my error. Um, Sarah.
I think, I think I'm understanding this question correctly. Um. At the board level, well, we have to be competitive. We also have to have competitive pay. To continue to attract top talent. Um. Obviously, making sure that we want teachers to also be a reflection of the community and people who care so deeply about this community. But I know I recently talked to a principal at one of the schools that said. D M P S actually doesn't have the best pay. We have the best benefits and a lot of these younger teachers. They don't need those benefits because they can stay on their parents' insurance until they're twenty-six. So I think we need to get creative and figure out how we can offer competitive pay to continue to attract and retain. The teachers that we have here. Um, I think the second part to this, and maybe I'm I'm not following it correctly, but. Um, I know that they have a program called Dream to Teach, which is a mentoring program. And I know my children, their biggest inspiration for school is their teachers. I mean, that's what they come home and they love most about going to school is their teachers. So having them involved in the mentoring programs that are offered within the school district. Uh, to get them involved in the opportunities to be future teachers, I think is also a great sta- strategy to have.
Thank you, Sarah. And uh, again, just for clarification points, right? What board-level strategies do you support? That uh will build and sustain an educator pipeline that reflects the uh current student body and other community that they so serve? Um, Maria.
I say culture and climate. Um, we have to start from within. I I think that in order to attract. Uh, teachers that want to stay more than a couple of years, we have to look at what we do internally. How, I mentioned earlier, it's important to pay attention to how we make people feel and it's the same with teachers. Right? What 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 is it that we're doing i- in our district? How are we investing in our t- in our teachers? How are we elevating the work that our teachers do? How are we um acknowledging them, right? How are we treating them? Um, what is it that we do in our district to elevate the work that they're all doing? The Dream to Teach is another, is another program that is out there. I believe in uh growing our own. We have the ability to do that. We are the largest district in i- i- in the state. So we have the ability to reach a lot of students. Um, if we are intentional about what message we want to send. So elevating things like this program that. Can hopefully plant that seed, right? That desire um in students to consider. Uh, becoming future educators. So elevating what we do as a district, investing in our teachers. Changing culture and climate and being intentional about um taking care of who we have here.
Thank you. Thank you, Marcus.
Yeah, so I I do think that, you know, diversification of of recruitment is really important. As has been said, but I think that another way that you could really create a pipeline is as we are again talking about engaging with communities. That represent, you know, our our students, you know, there might be individuals who are interested in teaching that. You know, are ready to make a career change and and there's a program called Grapple. It's a, that's what it's called. It has a much longer name. Uh, essentially, it's it's a, it's a pathway for, you know, professionals to transition into teaching in a shorter timeframe than going back to school. Um, for a four-year degree. Um, and that's, that's a really interesting opportunity that we could, we could promote and we could talk about with. Um, community members who show interest in teaching and wanting to be engaged um and and have a role in the school district. But I think that, I think there's one important conversation missing from uh the retention of our our professionals. Is that, you know, there's, we have a great benefit called I P R S and if you. Uh, look at some of this information coming out of the state, you know, they're looking at changing how I P R S, how I P R S would function. And I think that the, you know, the board could really advocate on, on behalf of. Uh, the district, on behalf of professionals that we have and really say, we're, we have no interest in any changes happening to I P R S. Anytime in the future. That's a, it's a benefit to us. Uh, it helps us retain talent. It helps us retain really important teachers. Um, and that's a, that's a benefit that we need to support and protect.
Awesome, thank you. So I was one of the eighty-some-odd individuals that worked on the reimagined D M P S plan. Um, one of the things that is not explicitly laid out in that plan is. How ultimately um the bond passing and that plan being put into place. Um. Is reflected in the board. So currently, our school district is divided into four districts. So we've got four representatives from, one from each district. We've got, what, three at-large individuals? But if this plan goes through, uh, then the district will move to three regions, no longer four. And so it seems to me like there would need to be some adjustment on the board. uh to be representative properly of the structure that the district is hoping to move to. So I am curious with the district moving from four to three for a regional structure, what changes, if any, would you support to ensure that representation and accountability align with the new feeder patterns? Uh, Maria?
Can I get a little bit of time to think about this one? I I I don't think that it's a conversation that I've actually had about the, and you're right, the number of uh districts that we have currently represented at the table are four. And that has to be um something to discuss. Uh, given that we are moving into into a new uh plan with our reimagining, reimagining education. And can I think about that one?
Yeah, absolutely. So I specifically asked this question uh because this is something that you all will definitely have to face. I believe, or I hope after our conversation today, that we do have a good shot of the bond actually passing. And there is a path forward for reimagine regardless of even how that plays out. Um, you know, the eighty-some-odd of us plus staff that worked on that spent a lot of late nights and a lot of time. And it's really important for our kiddos for that to be able to move forward in some shape or fashion. But we never had conversations about what this looks like on the board, but it is a conversation that you all are going to have to have. Um, I I don't expect that you all will have an answer either. If you don't have an answer, that is okay. I am just curious. I know when you throw things like this at new people sometimes, um, it, you get opportunities that you maybe wouldn't get from, from having been ingrained in the process or having a full information. And so I'm just curious, um, if if there is somebody, I see Sarah took herself off of mute. Um, if you are comfortable answering, and again, if you are not comfortable answering, it's not a trick question at all. I just know that it's something that you guys are gonna have to look into, and so I'm curious about what your thoughts are on it.
I love that you said this because in all the times I've read through all the reimagining, I honestly never really thought about the fact that you're changing districts, so.
And just really uh quickly, Sarah, I'm sorry. One of the things that is a misnomer for the general public is who was involved in this in the first place. So to Maria and Skylar's defense, as people who currently sit on the board, the board was not actively involved in the reimagine process. That was a community effort, and there were board members who got to check in and just sort of see how it was going, but they weren't involved in every single meeting. And so this question is new to them as well. Um, and I think it's really important that the community at large understand that uh reimagine was a community effort um that was supported by district administration and the board. But the board and uh most of the administration was not involved in the process. And so they wouldn't have this information either, and um it would be something that they wouldn't have known to consider because they didn't know what we were planning to do.
Right. No, and I agree. I really hope the public understands that this was a community effort that put together reimagine education. Um, but that's another topic. What, I think it would require a brainstorm session from not only the board, but also from the community. Um, and maybe the people who worked directly on the reimagining plan, but just thinking off the top of my head, wouldn't it make sense to have two representatives from each district? And then either only one at large, or you increase the board members to eight, and you have two at large? That, that to me seems like what makes the most sense.
Okay.
I I could see a lot of talk on that and figuring out people's opinions.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree. I would say that um the only tweak that I would, I would see from what Sarah mentioned was that I'd probably bump it to nine if we can. And have it three on the board or three at large with two in each each area. Um, and the only reason I say that is because in the case, when you have a contentious vote, having an odd number is always better than having an even number. Because then you you know what the majority of the vote would be. Um, so that's, nine gets a little bit, you know, it could get a little bit unruly for a board size, but I think it it would still work pretty well. Um, but that's, that's why I would say you try to keep it an odd number.
Okay, Ryan?
Victoria, it's an interesting question. I haven't thought about before you you hit on there, but you know, as somebody who's trying to door knock in a very oddly shaped district, right? Where is not intuitive and it crosses a river and it crosses school boundaries and district. I think I might, I might pump the brakes a little bit on the idea. Because as I've been kind of thinking about how I'm going to be a board member and how I'm going to represent the community, I actually think there's some value to not having people just in their camps, right? So not having, be- because the districts really don't make a whole lot of sense right now. I gotta think about more than just the northwest or the northeast or the east or the south. And so I I might, I I think we want to think about that because there, you know, I don't want to just be advocating and and create that where you're advocating just for the, that area. And I know that's not what you're suggesting, but I think that's the 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 human nature of it is. Then I'm just representing that area. And I think right now the districts are so non-intuitive that you uh are, i- if you're a district rep, you're you're representing a lot more than just a narrow defined sliver. The district couldn't even tell me of the list of the schools that are in district two. Yeah, so I I think there's some value to having a little bit of that um displaced and accountability to a broader group. So something to think about though.
Okay, Skylar?
Yeah, it's a great question, and uh a few things come to mind when I think about this. Um, the 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 current feeder pattern to the the future feeder pattern. Uh, one thing that I'll share that is is a, is a bit of an anomaly is that one of the board members now who represents one specific district actually represents two comprehensive high schools. So it's not as simple as every board member that's in a district seat is representing one high school. And then you have board members like myself representing District Four, which is the South Side. And while the majority of them go to Lincoln, there are residents that live in Des Moines that actually attend Carlisle that live next door to voting constituents in District Four. Um, and and some possibly even in Norwalk. Uh, this is certainly not my space of expertise, and I always always want to lean on experts. So I would want to get an expert in, someone who's done this, who's had this conversation before. And maybe it's not even a school board. I I do often think, you know, sometimes school boards take on work that really is not within the expertise. None of us here are election commissioners. Um, so sometimes it's about bringing in the experts to have the conversation, giving pros and cons and figuring out what is our role in this? And what are the pros and cons and what makes the most sense? Um, one thing that I would share that I'm not opposed to, uh, and I can't remember who made a comment earlier about it, is um, some of our neighboring districts actually don't have district seats. They all are at-large members. Um, and like I, 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 I need to think more about it, but it's probably initially not something I would be opposed to. Because what I recognize is although I have a certain population that votes for me, I have never not answered a question for a member of Des Moines Public Schools because of where they lived. Um, so although you may not be running at large, at the end of the day, the community doesn't fully and always understand that. So even us district seat representatives are still truly at-large when it comes to representing people and being a voice that they can lean on.
Yeah. Maria? And you're still muted.
I think that, i- you know, I'm thinking about how the regions will be divided. So I'm thinking, would it make sense for the larger region to have two representatives? And and then I I don't know, I had not thought about this question. Um, and so I can't say that I'm prepared to give a concise um response. Because I I have, I have to think about it. I think that the board will have to reimagine board leadership.
Yeah.
I think that's all I can offer.
That's a really good answer, Maria. I think everybody gave a good answer. I know that was very tricky. Um, but something that needs to be thought of. Um, and so I would encourage all of you, regardless of how the elections shake out, to really be thinking about what that looks like. Um, in our chat, NAACP member, um, as well as former Des Moines Public School Boards member, uh Jackie Easely, uh, just said that historically, the board member uh was, the boards were all at-large, um, but moved to uh representation by region in the early two thousands. Um, I think there is a pro and a con to both models. Um, but there's definitely a lot that can be learned there, but I look forward to seeing um how you all make that decision when the time comes for it to be made. So thank you uh for humoring my challenging uh question there. Um, just for everybody's information, uh Cory is having a slight issue and um has dropped from the chat, so I will wrap everything up here tonight. Um, I had one other question that um I wouldn't be the president of the NAACP if I didn't ask. And then we will close for the evening. Uh, uh, one question for myself, and then we do have a question in the chat also that I want to to bring to light. But this, this question from us at the NAACP would be, uh, what board policies would you support to reduce disproportionality in discipline while maintaining safe welcoming schools for all of our students? Um, Ryan?
So as far as a list of of board policies, I I'm not sure I have, I have that list of of what we could do. But I do think um there's been work that's been done previously that we can build on in this space. And I think we have to follow the data. Uh, I think Marcus and others talked about using data to understand what's happening in our schools. And I think it starts with understanding what are the disparate outcomes? And then it leads to why, the why, and what's the underlying, and what's the cause of those uh and how we get there? And so I don't know that I have the policy um remedies that maybe your question is looking for uh tonight. But I'm very interested in hearing about uh what this organization and what others see as the solutions to get to that why. If the data shows there is a disparate impact, we need to know why and not just just pass it on and just look the other way because uh that shouldn't be happening in our schools. And if it is happening, that that's something we we have to all be invested in fixing, right? Because there's a reason for that. It doesn't just happen randomly. So we need, we need to go to the root cause and and figure out what's, what's causing that.
Okay, Marcus?
I I think this goes back to what I said earlier about, you know, some of the board policies about going in and and having conversations with administrators and 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 teachers. And and engaging with them very specifically on, I'm a board member here to ask you a specific question and trying to find the answer. Because of, because of the policies around communication and the chain of command, um, sometimes it's not seen as the board's role to engage in conversations about discipline. So I think that, yeah, if we, as Ryan mentioned, if we find kind of a particular area where, or a particular school where, you know, uh, discipline is being enforced inconsistently across the region or disproportionately, um, I think that we need to have the ability to go in and say, hey, we need to sit down and have this conversation at the school level to understand what, what you're doing, how this is happening. That way we can have an educated, a more educated conversation with superintendent administrators about what's happening instead of having that filtered up through the chain. And I think that 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 level of communication is really important across the board. So that's, that's one thing that I would mention uh that I would, I would do.
Skylar?
Yeah, it's a great question, and I'm not sure what policy necessarily I would um support or enforce for quite yet. But what I think about this, one of the conversations we were having earlier about um utilizing experts, and for me, this is really an opportunity to hear the voices of our students. We can speculate why things are happening. We can guess, we can, we can look at data and trends. But the ones that are actually being impacted need to be the voices that are actually voicing why and how we change this. So for something like this, I would probably initiate some kind of a conversation with the students to better understand what type of, uh, what type of disproportional disciplines are hap- looking at the data, what disproportional disciplines are happening? And how is that impacting the students? And why do those students believe it? Because you can't get the why just by looking at numbers. In order to understand the why, we have to actually go to the source, and the source are two people. It's those who are enforcing the disciplinary actions and those who are being um disciplined through it. So I would really want to engage the students in conversation because I think without them, I would give an answer that's not um, that's not truly comprehensive.
Thank you. Maria?
This to me sounds a lot like um community engagement, um definitely student engagement, engagement. Uh, being willing to to get out there and to truly listen to what students are experiencing and the way um that information is is being communicated to families and how families are interpreting um that information. And truly hearing the stories and being willing um to do something about them. I think that a lot of times we can say that we do uh listen, that we do uh go to the community, but uh there is no follow-up um or or follow-through. And so I think that um engaging families, students, and um hear directly from them.
Thank you. Um, the questions that I've received um are all very similar to the one that is actually in the chat.
Uh, Victoria? Sorry, sorry, you're up.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
You know what? Everybody gives such wonderful thoughtful answers. Thank you, Marcus. Um, at the sake of, you know, not sounding repetitive, but I think we need to get outside perspectives involved. We need to talk to the students and we need to talk to the teachers. Um, as everybody has said, kind of figuring out what their perspective on it is. Why, why is the disciplinary disciplinary action happening? And is it equitable? Is is discipline equitable across the board within the whole district? Um, safety is always top of mind with everything, but we need to be, if there is consistently reports of non-equitable discipline, we need to make sure that we are getting to the root cause of that and that we're providing the resources that these specific teachers, students, schools need uh to fix it.
Thank you. I'm so sorry about that. Um, okay, so last question. Uh, the bond is just all the talk, as it should be all the talk. Um, we're like thirty-six years out from the last time we did a bond. We know that everybody around us has bonds and nobody is talking about theirs. Um, but we also know that Des Moines is in a unique circumstance in terms of um having a lower uh tax base and less opportunity to tax individuals and all of the things. And so um it is an important conversation for us to have and continue to have. And um when we put the uh bond, or excuse me, when we put the reimagine plan together, it was a much bigger plan than what is actually on the ballot today. That was over a five-hundred-million-dollar uh price tag. It was a big bond. It was a very it was all the things our kids need. Everybody wanted for our kids to have all the things they deserve to have to be educated properly. Um, it was decided, uh, however, to roll it out in a smaller bond with a quicker timeline so that impact could be felt more quickly uh by students. Um, also to give taxpayers the opportunity to be more comfortable with the, with the plan. And so to do so, there were things that were cut clearly from the plan. Some of those things look like um we initially had um all-day preschool um at a much larger scale than it is today. And um we had some shifting of uh grades uh from the middle school level back to the elementary level. So that would move sixth graders back to elementary. I do know that the sixth graders moving back to elementary uh is still happening in some places and can happen regardless of the bond or not. Um, to some extent, depending on school capacity size. Um, but losing preschool at the scale that we need preschool to exist in the Des Moines Metro is a big deal. And so I am curious that, um, let's say the bond passes, but of course, this isn't built in. What would you want to support or see the district do to be able to work on uh the ability to offer that all-day preschool for all of those younger uh kiddos? Uh, maybe I would start with Skylar.
Question is, what would I want to see done?
Yep, so bond, bond passes as is, but there's not enough money currently. Yep, so bond bond passes as is, but there's not enough money currently in the budget, in that budget to be able to allow for that expansion. So what would, what would you want to work on to make that a possibility for the future kiddos?
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. And so I'll start off by saying when this bomb passes. Uh, we will certainly um be able to add more early childhood education in the form of preschool. And you know, the the reality, Victoria, is that there are a lot of places and a lot of partners to support this work. Um, we absolutely need this bond to pass. However, after it passes, we still have things that we need done, particularly for early childhood education. And I really think that's an opportunity for our business sector to step in. For our philanthropic sector to step in, for our governmental partners to step in. This, the weight of this doesn't all have to fall on one, one decision. Uh, it it needs to be a collective effort because these people and these populations are also receiving the benefit of a vibrant community. And the benefit of an educated student that eventually becomes an educated workforce. So when it passes, we'll do what we need to do through the codified language of expanding early childhood education. But then there's still going to be more that's needed and we really have to have our partners step in and support this work. It can never just be done by DMPS or by solely the residents of Des Moines. This is truly a community initiative and I'm hoping that that's becoming more clear to our community.
Thank you. Um, Ryan.
Yeah, I agree with what Skylar said. I it's gotta be a goal and it's gotta be a priority for our district. But unfortunately, the the economic reality on on this issue is we're we're gonna need our state to be more involved. We're gonna need, we're gonna need those outside um outside resources to come to bear to get it to what I think, Victoria, we all believe. Uh, the level of access that um that is important and and will sustain our community over time. Um, but this is a great first step. And so I don't wanna, I don't wanna be um negative on where we are with this bond. Because I think this is going to give us a lot of resources to move in the right direction, but we're gonna have to keep grinding. We're gonna have to try to make policy changes at the state. And and federal level probably too.
Okay, thank you, Maria.
You know, I I think that um we are all aware of the impact that early childhood education has. Um, in the life of a child, right? So the younger they begin to have access to this education, the better they will do, right? Um. My hope is that if there are not enough resources allocated. For this to happen and to expand more um that our partners. Um, I believe that we do have partners that in in our community that believe and that are um. Willing to support. And so I would hope that we as a board can advocate and can reach out and can work with constituents, partners and allies.
Thank you, Sarah.
At the end of the day, I mean, all-day preschool is so important to the education of these kids. But the reality is, we need to get this bond passed and then we need to mobilize our entire community. To be advocating for state funding for all-day preschool for every student in the whole state. And that's really, uh, that's what needs to happen.
Thank you, Marcus.
Uh, one, thank you for your work on getting that plan set up. I will, and the one thing that I'm really disappointed about in this whole bond conversation, and I mentioned this last night. Was that, you know, the bond, the the ask was lower than the what the need was identified at. Uh, I think that was a really missed opportunity, especially when, you know, we've heard that this is a once-in-a-lifetime bond. Uh, so we're we're already missing the gap there. I think there are a couple of things that we we could start talking about. Um, you know, we don't need to wait thirty-six years for another bond. Um, I wouldn't want to do this right away, but you could start projecting out of like, when do you need? Uh, another bond to support future enrollment in in pre-K. Uh, the other one, and it's been mentioned here, but I think this is a more concrete example of what we could, what we could talk about with the state. Is the state program, state funding. The state a few years ago put together a package for employers to do daycare, just to put money towards daycare. Uh, employer-sponsored daycares and. I don't know the exact number, um, but a lot of the, a lot of those employers turned that money back to the state because they were like, we don't. We don't know what to do with this money. We can't use it effectively. We're not daycare providers. So I think that that money is still there, uh, or, you know, in theory. And you could start talking to the state about reallocating that towards uh pre-K programs. And uh, you know, similar structure, hey. You you have already made this investment, you've talked about it, you've engaged in it, you understand the importance of childhood, early childhood education. Let's just tweak the language so that we can get our employers in the region to support. Pre-K programs in our city.
Okay, awesome, thank you. All right, everyone, that will be the end of the questions. I we could be here all night. I trust me, this list is long. Uh, but um I do want to give you all an opportunity just for a part in closing statement. So if you could, no more than thirty to sixty seconds, starting with Sarah, um, any last words?
I feel like we have touched on so many things tonight. Um, I will just end by saying uh how incredibly important this election is. And it was really, it was really great to see the turnout last night at one of the forums. Um, I hope that everybody that is here watching and I hope that our entire community continues to pay attention. Because as I said in my opening remarks, every single person in our city should want. Des Moines Public Schools to be the most successful school district there is. It is so important. Um, and we, I really believe that we have, we have the right people in the right places that we can make this happen. And we're not going to give up, we're going to keep going. Um, it's too important not to, and I've said this before, but our kids deserve. To have the very best and we should accept nothing less than that. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you very much for having me and um I hope to see you when I'm on the school board.
Thank you, Maria.
I um would want to just say that it's. As Sarah said, the the election is really, really important. Um, the most important um thing though here is what. Uh, you as a voter, as a mom, as a dad, as a sibling. Um, believe that children in this district needs. Um, it it comes down to um. What you believe, your values, um, and how you see the world and how you see. Uh, your children, your children growing, developing, learning in this district. So I um am looking forward to eleven-four and looking forward to continuing to serve.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you for the invitation. Thank you for the great conversation tonight for for all the other uh candidates. Really appreciate this this dialogue. I would say do not assume, everyone that's on this and listening, do not assume that your neighbors, your family, your friends. Are educated and know about the importance of this bond and this this turnout and that we all turn out for the election. Do not assume that. Educate them now. We don't have much time. Talk to your neighbors, talk to your family. Because it it is everyone has said, this is, this is the most important thing. In this election is voting yes to support our kids and to support our our schools. And so let's not be, you know, sitting up late on November fourth saying, I wish I would have, I wish I would have made that call. I wish I would have knocked some doors. I wish I would have written some postcards. Do that now. We don't have much time and I appreciate everybody's efforts to to get the word out and educate everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus.
Yeah, I would just kind of piggyback on that and say, you know, there's gonna, there are gonna be new faces on the board, you know, uh. There are two seats that are open, um, so there's opportunities that we're gonna move forward, we're gonna build trust. And I've I've been really inspired by the conversation tonight, uh, really focusing in on. Uh, everything but the the two elephants in the room that we've been talking about for a long time. So I really, really appreciate that. I I I'll just echo, you know, this is an important bond issue. Uh, this is the most important issue on the ballot. Um, so make sure that you're texting your friends, tell everyone you know. That you support it and that you, they should support it too. And it's really, what what's the number it comes down to like seventeen, sixteen, seventeen dollars a month? Um, for the average household. Yeah, so it's, it's, it's something that is very achievable, I think. And um, I think that everyone, regardless of who you vote for on the board, should vote yes on on the bond.
Absolutely, thank you, Skylar.
Yeah, uh, so what I'll share is several weeks ago, when I was doing some canvassing and um. Putting out yard signs i- in the community. I had the fortune of doing it with some of my closest friends who have become my friends and these were. A group of eighteen-year-old Lincoln High School recent graduates. And during the car rides in between houses, I was sharing with them little tidbits about the importance of civic engagement. And public service and why we all have a responsibility in this community. And when I shared with them about reimagine education, the response I got from most of them was not, how much is this gonna cost? Who's not going to be impacted? Why are we doing this? The question was singular and the question was, why didn't you do this sooner? I could have benefited from it also. So I'm gonna close by saying, this is bigger than the moment we're currently in. This is an investment in our community, this is an investment in our students. And at the end of the day, every student deserves to thrive regardless of their background, their circumstances or their situations. So I hope that everyone else on November fourth will also join me and many others in reimagining education for the greater Des Moines. Um, and lastly, on the state quarter that was created in two thousand four in Iowa on the back of it, it reads. Foundation in Education, it's time for us to start making sense out of things that make sense. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. Well, thank you all so much for being here tonight. Uh, thank you to our candidates for your commitment to serve Des Moines families. Uh, the NAACP believes that strong public schools build strong communities and that every student deserves the opportunity to thrive. Uh, please stay engaged, please stay informed and more some, most importantly, votes. Thank you and have a wonderful evening.